I'm going to get them in.
I'm going to get them.
Water and smoke damage.
I've got 621.
I'll go ahead and call the July 24th meeting to order. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business or the Industry's Interest in Locating or Expanding Its Facilities in the Community. One, Project Number 2017-023. Three, Discussion or Consideration of the Acquisition of Real Property for a Public Purpose or of the public, or of the Disposition of Publicly Held Real Property Where Discussion in an Open Meeting Would Adversely Affect the Bargaining Position or Negotiating Strategy of a Public Body. One, Old Blacksburg Middle School Property. I guess actually this is the third item, but it's under number one. Discussion or Consideration or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplinary, or Resignation of Specific Officers, Appointees, Employees of Any Public Body. One, the Library Board. Two, Parks and Recreation Commission. Three, Personnel. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
We have seven hours.
We're in a closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of a closed meeting?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
And Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven minutes.
Certification of the Closed Meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best
Do you hear this?
That certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what this means is, this is our Board's word to you that we're not talking about things that we're not supposed to be talking about in closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven minutes.
At this time, I want to ask us to rise and observe a moment of silence, and after that, I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is public hearing. Specifically, the following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the New River Valley section of the Roanoke Times on July 7th and July 14th, 2017, namely, a request by the Montgomery County Economic Development Authority to rezone a total of 46.68 acres from agricultural A1 to manufacturing M1 for the expansion of an existing industrial park. The vacant property is located on the west side of the intersection of the Parkway Drive Southeast and Technology Drive Southeast approximately 281 feet from the edge of the pavement of the cul-de-sac of Parkway Drive Southeast, and this is the same property also lying adjacent to the southern boundary of the property known as Backcountry Distribution Center, 295 Technology Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia. The property is identified as tax parcel number 094-A-8, parcel ID 004061, in the Shawsville Magisterial District. The property currently lies in an area designated as urban expansion of the 2025 comprehension plan. Emily, thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to review the staff report that was provided in your packet for tonight's meeting. This is an application for Cox Family Farms as the property owner, but their agent is the Montgomery County Economic Development Authority. You'll notice that it says a rezoning of 68.866 acres. In the original packet of information and what we moved forward with when we provided you the staff report, it identified 46.68 acres. That discrepancy was discovered as the EDAs moved forward with some of their due diligence and did a survey, and that survey let them know that the acreage wasn't accurate. So, we do always recommend surveys. This is an aerial of the property. You can see that the jurisdictional boundary is this dotted purple line around the property. This is the subject property, which is mostly clear there, and it's this little tail piece right there. The property is just field property. This is a view looking over at it, and this view here gives you a sense of where Parkway Drive is that's meant to be expanded. This shows you some of the surrounding zoning. You can see that for the county, we've got A1 to the south here, and then you've got Town of Christiansburg right here. And this shows you the comprehensive plan map, future land use identifies it as an urban expansion area. So, Falling Branch Corporate Park began development back in 1994. This request for the, which is now 68 acres, is to basically expand the park. They don't have plans for construction at this time, just the ability to go in, do some grading, get the site ready should we have some prospects interested. This is the plan that was submitted along with the rezoning. This shows not only the county portion, but also the town portion, the town being over here. There's storm water for both sides, and this is mostly the subject property. You will notice there's a green buffer area there to the south, and these colored areas are the proposed paths that can be developed by economic development. This is the updated plat that more clearly showed those parcel lines that was recently The impacts you'll see from the staff report are fairly minimal. Transportation, Parkway Drive is going to be extended. That's going to be the only access to the site. Right now, the only access is really down up on Old Farm Road. They have no intentions of continuing to use that. Water, sewer, even gas is available there. All that will be extended for development of the site. There's no flood zone on the property, and for storm water, ENS will all be addressed as part of the development. Urban expansion is an area where the county talks about having either increased density or an area for commercial uses and job creation, so this fits in with that. And therefore, staff found that it was consistent with the comp plan, and we took this to the Planning Commission last week for their public hearing. We recommended approval of the site, and the commission voted in favor also. We had five yeses. Surinans, we have a few absent. And that's all that I have for you. I can answer any questions you may have for staff. Also, the agent has a representative here, so.
I'll start off with Supervisor Creed. Do you have any questions? Supervisor Perkins? Supervisor King? Supervisor Biggs?
No.
I just want to point out there were a couple of people that attended the hearing, but no one spoke out against it. Is that correct?
That's correct. We had, and the information that was provided to you will let you know that no one spoke in or against at the hearing, although we did have some interested parties attend. And additionally, we have had no calls other than just general inquiries in the office.
Thank you. Now, I don't believe that anyone has signed up for public address, but in regards to this public hearing, excuse me, not public address, but to address the Board in regards to this public hearing, but that does not mean that you can't come forward. Is there anyone who wants to address the Board about this rezoning request? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing in regards to this request. And do we need to take action after the public hearing?
I'd like to see this. Go ahead.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Did you need a second?
Oh, I thought we had a second.
Someone seconded it?
Daryl.
Okay.
I thought Daryl seconded it. Any other discussion?
I'm hearing. Okay. Swat up.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven minutes.
The next time our agenda is public address, there's one individual signed up, but that doesn't mean that other individuals can't come forward. This is the time for the Board to listen to what you have to say, not necessarily to respond to citizens. Our staff does take your name and address, and we will try to answer some of the questions that you raised during this period of time. The first person, or the only person we've got signed up is Mr. White. Mr. White, would you please come forward? You have five minutes. And please state your name and address.
Thank you. Douglas White, 760 Triangle Street, Blacksburg, Montgomery County. So, I'm here on the boundary adjustment issue again. As a citizen, I wonder why the county has not held or attended any of the meetings regarding the boundary adjustment. I wonder how on June 12th, the Board of Supervisors suggested enough public concern had been raised to warrant a meeting that should have occurred by now. I wonder why on June 10th, the Board of Supervisors decided not to have a meeting, claiming that no one showed an interest in having a meeting. I wonder why the county has sent a, I wonder if the county sent a letter to the town of Blacksburg asking for clarification about the people that lie outside of the boundary adjusted area, and I wonder if the town responded and sent the county back a letter. I would submit it's because the county Board of Supervisors doesn't want to hear from the citizens of the county regarding the boundary adjustment. We have asked for the following to ensure equal opportunities after the boundary adjustment for citizens in the county who have already been disenfranchised from the effects of activities on the top of the ridgeline. That list would be inclusive of, we'd like to see an agreement regarding sewer and stormwater management and requests to include mitigation of existing conditions, suggest mapping of existing, and then sinkholes and the creation of buffer areas around them, as well as getting the Windsor Hills pump station under control and the sandbags off of the wellhead. Agreement regarding the maximum density of future developments regarding specific acreage in question and the last claim of 100 bedrooms nine years ago, 200 wasn't acceptable to the adjacent property owners, but after meeting the Poths in the last 18 months, there was a fair bit of middle ground that came to be. The people started to understand the family dialogue, the families started to understand the adjoining dialogue, and there was a comfortability around this number. We'd like to see the county solidify that as part of the agreement so that we don't have to deal with a planned residential development or a PRD that's got above Windsor Hills density. Adoption of Harding Road, so this was another big issue. The current proposals were that the road was not going to be adopted by the town of Blacksburg. We requested it to be done because currently there's a snow mist at the top of the ridgeline. You drive all the way out of the valley, you get to the top of the hill and run into the snowdrift because the plowing stops. That's a major issue. That road is treacherous in the winter time at least. The other issue, four, agreement that future feeder roads have deceleration lanes so that Harding Road doesn't just turn into the neighborhood, that there's a deceleration lane for any line that goes in and out of this neighborhood. It's vitally important to the people that have attended all of the meetings that came. We request a statement of intent from the county. We'd like to know what you guys' intent are when we move from R2 to R4 and knowing full well that the rezoning is down at the horizon a little bit. The property won't go at R4, it'll go at some rezoning. We'd like to know what the county's intent is, what your intent is, when we give this land away to the town. I've been an advocate and a voice for nine years. I'll commit any meeting that you guys ever want to have, and you know that, but you don't respond to me, you don't respond back to my emails, you don't get in touch with me, I write it down on the form every time I speak, I don't hear from you guys. And the citizens deserve more than this. After nine years of it, they deserve more. We, as a group, came to the middle in 2007, 2008, 2009, during that whole period of time, and we're willing to come to the middle again. Just let us come to the middle. Be part of us meeting in the middle. And then codify it in agreement. As I said before, there's two agreement protocols. One is, we don't have any problems with justice. The other one is, we'd like to see some conditions. Your residents would like to see some conditions. We'd like you to hear that. Thank you.
Is there any other citizens who would like to come forward to be heard during public address? If so, if you would come forward and have a seat in the front row. No, if there was multiple speakers, if some of them would like to come forward, if there's other folks who would like to address the Board, I'm asking folks to come forward, but you two are first in line.
Shall I get these to work?
That's fine.
Okay.
And Ms. Majors, if you would state your name and address.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Table Road, Blacksburg, Virginia.
Sure.
I'm Tina Smoosh, 5555 Mount Table Road, Montgomery County. This won't take her time away, will it? She's just going to hold the map.
That's fine.
This is a map that Sam Masool had for his press conference in Roanoke, and he was focusing on the water impacts for Roanoke and Salem. And this, we are going to have our own map, but we are, this is Mount Table Road Crossing. So, the other map we're going to have shows more of us up here, Montgomery County brush mountain. This shows the pipeline, and these are confluences and crossings. Montgomery County is this. So, you've got the north fork and the south fork of the Roanoke River that flow into the water supply for Salem and Roanoke here. They have done sediment analysis on the north fork of the Roanoke River, and it's going to be currently higher than it ever has before. They have done nothing to analyze the south fork. That is why either I'm here to thank you for the letter that you have written to the DEQ asking to suspend the comment period until sediment analysis and other things are done, or you haven't done that, and I'm asking you, this needs to be done, we need to stop the clock on this. Besides sediment analysis, the VDH had recommended that every house within 1,000 feet have well water testing, and there's a number of things that have to be done. The DEQ is supposed to be our agency that protects and cares about our water quality, the only one, four doesn't. That's all we've got, and other people will be talking about State Water Control Board and our experience there, but my personal feeling and opinion is that they're not doing a good job taking care of our water quality and thinking about that. Is there anything else I need to add here?
Well, one of the important things is, you're just looking at the major pipeline crossings of these major tributaries to the Roanoke River, but we actually have hundreds of tributary stream crossings in the watershed.
Yeah.
Virtually the majority of those are in Montgomery County. So, it's a huge sedutation load. And Salem and Roanoke ultimately, the cities pay the price, and Blacksburg doesn't, but our rural households and then those two cities are impacted with, we didn't pre-sedute. So, it's pretty serious if the water body crossings be done right, and that the impact be assessed beforehand.
Right, right. And this is a handout that you just got from Sam Masool, and in the back, there's four points, and he says, must suspend the comment period in all public hearings until the information necessary is received. Okay, moving on to the next thing. The Roanoke Pipeline Advisory Committee met today. You can go ahead, please. The Roanoke Pipeline Advisory Committee met today, and a number of people are very concerned, and they're asking Ruth Allen and Richard Kaywood to look into getting a bond for damage to Roanoke County, which they said that they would do. I'm also here to ask you to, there's, Delegate Habib has scheduled a hearing for Newport, and he's, I think he's going to work on getting a certified transcriber, but I would like our counties to ask the DEQ to make sure that they will accept that into the DEQ record. That would be very important because otherwise, you're psyching people off thinking that they're making comments and they won't go to Radford because Newport's closer. So, I can talk to you a little bit more about that later, but just a quick little letter or comment to the DEQ asking them to confirm that they would accept that. I'm not sure whether, I'm not asking you guys to pay for it. I'm not sure whether the Delegate Habib has a way to pay for this or the nonprofits will, but we're not asking the counties to, we just don't want there to be a problem, and if the counties ask and get confirmation ahead of time, we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other individuals that would like to address the Board? Seeing no one else come forward, so I'm going to go ahead and close public address. I believe that there is an addendum. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And it's at your place this evening. It's for a reappraisal of funds for the Falling Branch Elementary School Expansion Project. The Board actually took action on this at the last meeting in June, but this is to reauthorize the funding for the current fiscal year.
Is there a motion to add this to the agenda?
Second.
A motion to second any further discussion about adding it to, this is just voting on to add to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven minutes.
And will we put this under new business?
First item, new business. Or last item?
Last.
Yes.
Next item is old business. One, entering to a boundary line adjustment agreement with the Town of Blacksburg Harding Road Poth Properties, specifically resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery, Virginia, affirming a boundary line adjustment agreement between the County of Montgomery, Virginia, and the Town of Blacksburg, Virginia, and authorizing the filing of a joint petition pursuant to Section 15.2-3106 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended to approve the agreement. Is there a motion?
Some other.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yep.
Ms. Perkins?
All right. I've thought a lot about this. I have talked to Mr. Meadows, our administrator. I have notified several people on the Board about this particular thing. And it's been, of course, and part of the business of not having another meeting was the fact that after coming together and talking with the Poth people and those who want to develop it, and I need to also say that I did hear from Carol, I can't think of her last name right now, but the person who was really so worried about the water, and I did hear from one other person, but I didn't get those because my iPad was at a commission at the time, and so I couldn't even respond to them on an email. But we've thought about that, and we certainly don't want to make things very difficult for the people who live around. But in thinking about the, whether or not we would take the option of giving the land or doing a boundary adjustment, I think that whether we do a boundary adjustment or whether we don't, that land can be developed. I know that it's been talked about over the 20 years that I've been here on the Board. And I think as we looked at whether we have it and it is developed, or whether it is part of the Town of Blacksburg and is developed, that the Town of Blacksburg is going to require the people who are developing it to have public water and public sewer. Because as I think Ms. Demots brought up to last time, that wells and septic systems are not acceptable to the Town of Blacksburg, so there will have to be public water and public sewer there. Also, considering the situation with regard to the zoning, if the Town of Blacksburg takes that in, the Town of Blacksburg will do the rezoning, and they will determine what are the stipulations for that rezoning. Actually, with the Town of Blacksburg controlling that land, they will then have the responsibility for the parameters under which that land can be developed. So, I don't know what is in store for development. I know, you said, Mr. White, that it once was 200, and now it's down to 100 residential places. We know also that because of the situation in the land, not all of the land is developable, mainly because of the cars, terrain, and the sinkholes that are there. So, it seems to me that once the land, if we vote to have the Town of Blacksburg take the land, and we vote to have this boundary adjustment, then it's up to the developers and up to all the citizens that are around there to have the town notified and ask the town for consideration of the same things that we were asked to consider. So, I think that probably I will support the boundary adjustment. Now, what kind of conditions go along with that? I don't think it has been established, has it, Mr. Meadows? It has not been established what kind of conditions will go with that. So, it will be up to the developers to, again, tell the town just exactly what kinds of conditions they should be looking at when the time comes to approve whatever development goes there. So, I think that having the town have it, requiring public water and public sewer, and requiring the zoning and the conditions that must be met in order for that development to take place, then that becomes an issue to talk with the town staff. to take place, then that becomes an issue to talk with the town staff and the town council and have that determined. So those are the things that I've been thinking about. Did I miss something? Anybody?
I wanted to ask, just have kind of a procedural discussion a little bit. And, you know, I'm kind of looking to Craig and to Chris and my colleagues with more experience. But is it... I guess I understand it as being not typical to have a development proposal with a boundary line adjustment. And the reason I'm asking is there's nothing for us to evaluate as far as density or anything of that nature. We're simply being asked to change a boundary line.
Right.
And is that the typical way of things having been done? Is a boundary line adjustment would precede any type of development proposal?
Depends. There have been, not since I've been here, but I know in other communities in the past that many times when a development is looking at being developed or expanding an existing development, that that comes in and is part of the discussion for making a boundary line adjustment as well. It's my understanding from talking to the Poths at this time, they do not have a plan of development. They just want to go ahead and move forward with bringing this property into the town so that at some point in the future, if they do have a development plan, it would be governed under one set of rules, i.e. the town's.
Also, to, I think, to provide that sewer and water from the town, which, of course, we would not have. And we would have to have them have a series of wells or a huge well somewhere. Or they'd have to build some way of dealing with the sewer on that particular land. Whereas with the town, they would have the water and sewer that comes from the town.
But I'm looking to Mr. King, too. Wake up!
Do what?
Right at me! I'm looking at Mr. King, too. The PSA lines are nowhere close to this subject parcel, are they?
No, we're not.
I mean, from what I've gathered in our meetings, we are not planning on extending PSA.
We could never bring water there the way it is.
Yeah, it's far away from...
Very, very, very cost prohibitive.
Very far, because it would be more expensive than it would be possible at this point in time because we don't have it.
When I was looking at the information that Ms. Gibson provided for us, I did just a very basic calculation. And this did not take into consideration any land that's undevelopable. I've said this parcel is, you know, in this calculation, all of it is developable. So I know this is not an accurate figure. But by rights, if it was developed as an R2 with its current zoning, that's 77 houses that could be built there. And so that kind of influences my decision making when I'm thinking of 77 wells, 77 septic tanks, or some sort of massive infrastructure to serve that many homes. It causes me a lot of concern for other landowners and homeowners around there that are already on well and septic. That's a lot of drilling. It's kind of my thoughts on it.
Right. Yeah, I think that's one of the really sticking points for the whole issue, is that you just couldn't put 77 wells and 77 septic tanks in that area. It would have to be some way to develop that whole area with minimum amounts, which may mean a great big well. Or I don't have any idea exactly what we're talking about. But I do know that Ms. Gibson can certainly add to that about the water and the sewer and the wells and the septic systems that would be allowed in our... Under our auspices, in other words. You want to ask her about that? I don't know. We didn't ask you, so we didn't get you prepared. But I'm sure you might be able to help us a little bit there.
I think that everything that's been said thus far, there is a by right development available. It would have to utilize water and sewer. We don't have the ability to extend our PSA lines to this portion of the county.
Right.
While you're up here, can I ask you another question that might be slightly outside of your job description, but you might know? Stormwater. If somebody built a house on land that they own, say that somebody bought an acre, and they're just going to build a single-family home, how involved does stormwater management get for something like that?
For one house on one lot, probably not as much. But if there's a trigger that you'll hit, when you've got at least three, you'll trigger at least commenting a development. And so there is still an involvement there with that.
Thank you.
Other discussion? I would point out that we did get an email response. I don't know if it was Craig that forwarded it from Mark Verneal indicating that he did not foresee the Blacksburg Town Council changing its current policy to provide water to the citizens if they were affected outside of this area. He didn't say definitively that they wouldn't, but it seemed to imply, at least from my reading, that they had no plans on changing their current policy. And so with that, I was waiting to hear a lot from what Ms. Perkins had to say. It's her district. Also, it's basically across the street from April's district and close to Mary's district. For me, I think Darryl talked about it about three or four meetings ago. You can have 70 wells, and if these folks have issues, you're going to cause the water table to go down. And then you're going to have 70 septic tanks potentially. Or even, let's say we go with 50. You're still talking about affecting the water table. And if you think about the development, they're up towards White's way. Their wells are at this level now. If the water develops, the table drops, that means they're going to have to either redrill wells or the like. And I do have some concerns. I have some concerns that those folks outside the county will not have a voice when it comes to the Town of Blacksburg, that they will not be able to say how this property is developed. But I also have to think about the Poths. Here, those folks are saying, "We want to pay more taxes." They're going to take this property into the Town of Blacksburg, and they're going to roughly pay 25% more taxes in doing so. And they're willing to take that on. The Town of Blacksburg has a reputation of being very stringent on their rules. I know that there's been some folks, and there's been a couple of folks have been very vocal with us about their concerns. I don't doubt that Mr. White is going to continue to be vocal on other folks who have their concerns. And I still think that the town council will listen to them. And so it's my plan to vote in favor of it since Ms. Perkins is in favor of it. Is there any other discussion? Sorry, I couldn't see you.
Well, I was just going to say, I had concerns, I guess, that I had spoken about earlier, especially about traffic. But it is a Ms. Perkins district. So when I talked to her earlier today, one of the things that seemed to make sense to me was the disruption. Because we've talked about with just the pipeline, the disruption to water. And so if you're talking about putting in a number of wells and septic tanks versus hooking onto town water, you know which one is going to cost the most disruption to your water table and to your land. So with that in mind, I'm going to support it. And the concern about the citizens outside of there, you know what's going to happen. If something happens to their water, they're going to be over here. So we know that going in if we make this vote.
Well, and I think that's the same thing that we would do for every group of citizens everywhere. If some development takes place and it is not favorable to the people who live outside of that, then it is our responsibility then to work with those citizens and with the people who are doing the development, if we can. But realizing also that the Town of Blacksburg... Chris said they're very stringent. They are. And I think that they would consider the people that are outside of the boundary. And I think that it would then, as I said earlier, be the responsibility of the developers and the citizens to make their wishes known to us that are still county citizens. And also, they can make their wishes known to the town, but the town doesn't have any responsibility for them. We do. And that would... Regardless, we would be responsible for it, okay?
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here. The first one being, what is going to happen if we pass this thing on to a group or to Blacksburg or whoever we pass it on to, and nobody wants to build sewage and everybody wants the land? So that means that somewhere along the line, somebody's got to give. And I think we need to give before we get started on something else that we're going to be sorry that we did sometime long in the future.
They won't be able to develop, as I understand Blacksburg, they will not be able to put houses on there unless they pay for the sewer when they do their subdivision development. The Poths have maintained that as well. They're going to be required to upgrade the sewer. That's what the Town, during the Blacksburg Town Council meeting, one of the things that we came up. But also, that's what Mr. Poth talked about. So the town will not let you drill wells. You have to hook up the town water and sewer.
That I understand. But, you know, we've got all these people all over the county. As was all said back five, six years ago, we've got people all over this county that didn't want water, didn't want sewage, but they're getting it. And they're paying for it. Because we can't charge it to Christiansburg if we're in jurisdiction of theirs. We will have to pay for it. And we are paying for it. We're going around and we're going to make the surplus and it's coming back. Personally, I was never in favor of it to start with, as everybody will remember. And it all, though it's gotten down to this, you can't just keep giving things to this and not making everybody that's in that group pay for it.
As I see it, and maybe someone correct me if I'm wrong, the Poths, the developers, are going to have to pay for the sewer. It's not going to be the taxpayers of Montgomery County or the taxpayers of Blacksburg.
Right.
And they're probably... They're probably not going to put it out there for them to do something until the other is done.
Anytime you build a large development, you've got to pay for water and sewer. And then they pass that on for the persons who buy the homes or the town owns or whatever is there. So it really is not going to cause the taxpayer anything. It's the people who buy the properties that they have and what they develop. I mean, the developer has to do that.
I would be more than willing to vote for it to be developed and then do their own makeup of what they want it to look like when they get through.
But once we vote to go into the town, they'll have to do that.
They have to do it.
Because it won't be an R.
The town don't have to do anything.
No, the developer, in order to develop the property...
Developer has to.
If he wants to do it.
If he wants to develop it.
Right. They just leave it open as green space.
That all has to happen upfront.
Right.
Because if you don't, you can't sit here and pass it and say, "We're going to do it," when you don't know whether the developer's going to do it or not.
Well, but...
Well, he has to.
He has to. If it gets done, he don't have to.
What's been before us tonight is the boundary line adjustment, not the development. They'll have to submit their plans to the Town of Blacksburg. They'll have to sign up for their water, their sewer, all those things. That won't be before us. It'll all be on that developer and the Poths to do all those things. It won't be on us.
And what happens if it doesn't get done?
Then they don't develop.
They don't develop.
But then they now have to pay about 25%. Somebody can calculate it, so over 25%. Maybe about 28, 29% more taxes because they're paying the Town of Blacksburg taxes as well as the county taxes as soon as it goes in.
And who's going to finance the rest of it?
That's up to the Poths. We're not doing financing on...
No, it's not.
I have two just small things to add in light of some of the other discussion. One, I think it's important to point out that the county comprehensive plan designates this as part of the urban expansion area. And the county comprehensive plan, obviously, is a citizen-driven, citizen input given document. And so as I see it, and I might be wrong, and please jump and tell me if I'm not, but this is the only way that we can realize that as an urban expansion. Because as it sits, there's no access to public water and sewer unless it's in the town. And so all the urban expansion that could occur there would be some single-family homes unless it's in the town. So I think it's important to point out that if we vote for the boundary line adjustment, it does allow us to realize that goal as outlined in the comprehensive plan. And then also, of course, I'm concerned for citizens and their continued access to water. I hope they would come before us and let us know if there's any problems. And I know I personally would be an advocate for solutions for them. And I think some of my board members would be as well.
I think that that point in time, we might look for a boundary line adjustment for them so they could go into the Town of Blacksburg and then hook into the water and sewer, if that's something...
Yeah, I think we would. I know I would be an advocate for a solution that would work because access to water is crucial for life. So it would be something that I would feel very strongly for.
Well, I also think it's exceedingly important for water and sewer to be separate and to not have one being damaging the other. And I think that having the town to have the water and the sewer, that it would be the best thing, frankly.
When someone takes this in, if we vote here and we vote someone to take that property in, then who's going to pay the taxes between now and the time that...
The Poths will continue to pay us. But they'll also, once the Town of Blacksburg go in, I guess it'll be prorated. So they'll end up, as soon as it goes into the town, they'll pay a prorated share. But they'll still always continue to pay us taxes. But they'll also be paying Town of Blacksburg taxes.
Somebody's got a plan.
Right.
I've seen...
That's why I said, Mr....
I've seen them paying one or two.
If you keep on talking about the taxes, they might...
They may withdraw this request.
Well, and that's exactly what I'm afraid of.
Well, I think once we vote on it and then it goes forward...
It's Blacksburg.
It's... He's in Blacksburg now and...
And they're stuck with it.
Yeah. Blacksburg still has to vote on it, right? They will still have to vote for it as well. But I mean, once it goes in, it's done. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? There's a motion to second, I believe.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Six ayes and one no.
And next item on our agenda is Tab B. Prices for Village One LLC Developers Agreement Resolution Authorizing the County of Montgomery to enter into a developer agreement... Oh, did I skip one? I apologize. Oh, new business. I apologize. There we go. Sorry about that, folks. Subject B. Request restrict truck traffic on Mount Tabor Road. Resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to restrict through tractor-trailers or semi-trailers combinations on Route 624, Mount Tabor Road slash Newport Road in Montgomery County. Is there a motion?
Settled.
There was... All right. Is there a second?
Second. Pick one.
You just... Everybody votes.
I think there were about six of them. The chair, I think, was the only one who didn't make a motion. And then Mr. King seconded it.
Mr. Chair, I did want to point out that we sent out a revised agenda this afternoon. It's in Dropbox. There were a couple of clerical... It's in Dropbox and there were a couple of clerical things in the resolution that had been in Dropbox earlier.
Right.
Nothing substantive changed. It was just a couple of corrections, so.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So Roanoke County is waiting on us to make this decision tonight, and then they'll begin their public hearing. And will somebody from this board be attending their public hearing? If not, can we? And since I'm bringing you up, I'm happy to do that if nobody else wants to.
Either board or staff, I think, are going to.
Well, and what we'll do is, assuming this is approved this evening, we'll write a letter tomorrow. I'll talk to the county administrator of Roanoke County, then they'll start their process. And as soon as I know the dates, I'll let y'all know.
Yeah, I don't want to voluntold anybody to go out there, so I'm happy to do it. But I think it's important, because we've had so much citizen comment on our end, that we go out to Roanoke and advocate where our citizens might not be able to or have the time to.
Yeah.
Is any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Shepherd.
Now we go to the next item. Y'all keep your straight here.
Mr. Creve, get out of here.
I was. Resolution To Approve The Industrial Development Authority Of Pulaski County, Virginia To Issue Bonds For The Benefit Of Virginia Tech Foundation. Is there a motion?
I'll move it, but you probably need to explain it to them.
I'll do the best I can.
There was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. County Administrator, would you bring this up to speed?
I will. Virginia Tech Foundation has requested the issuance of bonds not to exceed 11 million for a project at the Research Center, Corporate Research Center. The Economic Development Authority of Montgomery County worked with Virginia Tech on a prior bond issue and did not have funding capacity to work with them on this one. So the law allows, the law allows for Virginia Tech to approach adjoining jurisdictions for use of their economic development funding ability if the board in the county where the project's located, i.e. Montgomery County, concurs with the request. There's no obligation to Montgomery County, the EDA, for this. It's basically a requirement in the law that Montgomery County gives its consent to allow Pulaski County to issue the bonds on behalf of Virginia Tech. To be noted as well, just as we've worked with Virginia Tech in the past, the EDA simply serves as a conduit that does not create any debt liability on the part of the county, just as this won't create any debt liability on Pulaski County. It's a financing conduit in the Internal Revenue Code that allows EDAs to act on this behalf. So basically, what you're being asked to do is say it's okay for Pulaski County to issue these bonds for Virginia Tech for this financing project. And there's no obligation, no contingencies, no, nothing related to Montgomery.
This isn't one of those things where we have to stand for it if it falls apart. I didn't think so. Thank you.
Not at all.
Any other discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll? Oh, there's a, was there a motion in the second? There was?
Yes. We could discuss it.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject B, Prices Fort Village 1 LLC Developers Agreement Specifically Resolution Authorizing The County Of Montgomery County To Enter Into A Developer Agreement With Prices Fort Village 1 LLC In Order To Address Prices Fort Village Use Of Grant Funding Received By The County Of Montgomery From The Virginia Department Of Housing And Community Development For The Old Prices Fort School Comprehensive Community Revitalization Project. So I move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't get the message.
Madam Clerk, was there any?
There only yet.
Any other, any other discussion?
That one.
Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject C, Intent To Abandon Route 780. A Resolution Directing The County Administrator To Post And Publish The Board Of Supervisors' Intent To Abandon Route 780 For The Full Length Of The State-Maintained Portion, Namely One-Tenth Of A Mile Pursuant To Section 33.2-909 Of The Code Of Virginia As Amended. Is there a motion?
You might want to tell the audience why after we get a second, yeah.
And county administrators, I understand this is a one-tenth.
It's a very short stretch road. It's my understanding that the only, the road only serves Sowers Chapel Church. Is that correct? Nope, okay. Help me.
Help me.
It's okay, we'll get there.
It's what happens when I take a week of vacation.
The church is used to access a couple of adjacent properties. The church has already reached out to them and they are supportive of the request, but we will be sending adjacent property notifications to each of them about the upcoming hearing on the 28th. We're also going to be posting the property tomorrow, so anyone could comment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Again, this is just to advertise the intent, not to actually vote on it.
What happens, so we're going to advertise the intent, and what's the timeline like? How long do citizens have to provide feedback? In three weeks, a month?
We will have a public hearing on August 28th to solicit citizen comment.
Okay.
So we can, once it's posted, we'll be soliciting comment up until that time. And then I'm assuming the board will take an action at a, at a following board meeting, which would be early September.
Okay.
The statute where your requirement is 30 days, so when we post tomorrow, it will be something like 35 days before we get to the 28th. And we actually only have to say that you're willing to hold a hearing, but during that 30 days, should anyone request it, we would then have to still move forward with the advertisement. So I just talked to Marty and we feel like it's fairly straightforward to just go ahead and hold the hearing.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Emily.
There was a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next is Refer To AFD Committee And Planning Commission. AFD District 6 Renewal Process. A Resolution Specifically Requesting The AFD Advisory Committee And The Planning Commission To Commence At The Renewal Process For AFD 6. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next is Our County Attorney's Report. And our county attorney.
We know.
On the agenda, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there was, I told you.
I know, I was looking.
Is there a motion in regards to reappropriation of the money for Falling Branch Elementary School Expansion Project?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Yes. Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now we go to County Attorney's Report. And the county attorney is on his family vacation, and so I'll report that, and he'll be back with us at our next meeting. And next on the agenda is County Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank the board again for the opportunity to take vacation last week. It was very nice. Two items.
I will say this, I don't think you're allowed to go because we've had buildings burn and things like that, so you need to stay low from here on out.
I'll stay well.
Too many bad things occur when you're.
No pressure, Craig.
No pressure. I'll let y'all talk to my wife. Just two items this evening. One, I wanted to share with you that preliminary plans have been drawn for the Riner Fire Department, the new Riner Fire Department. I had a chance to look at those earlier today. We're reviewing them with the Fire Department Committee, I believe, Wednesday afternoon at 5:30. Very exciting, very exciting. Glad to see that project moving forward. I think the community and I think the board will be very pleased with what's coming forward with that project, so glad to see that rolling finally. The only other thing I have is I've received notice, and I don't know if you've received invitations as well, but the Daughters of the American Revolution are holding a bridge naming ceremony on Friday, August, no, not Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday, August 3rd at 2:00 p.m. at the Pete Di River Course for the naming of the Route 114 Bridge, the Pepper's Ferry Bridge over the New River, to name that bridge the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bridge. If you remember, this board passed a resolution supporting that effort some months ago. Pulaski County also has passed a resolution. And the ceremony is actually going to be at the Pete Di River Course, not at the bridge because you can't.
It's a bridge.
Yeah, because it's a bridge. You can't shut the bridge down. Jennifer and her staff are working with the Daughters of the American Revolution. We're going, I think, provide the video feed from the bridge over to the Pete Di River Course, but if you weren't aware of that, wanted to make you aware of that. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, I think I have three things. First thing is about the, the questions about the pipeline and letters and all that. Can someone update me about all of that since I've been out now?
With everyone on vacation, I was waiting for feedback on the letters. I signed those and I gave them to Susan, and I think she may have either given them to Judy, and so they should be going out there.
Okay, all right. All right, and then, let's see, Jennifer handed me this. I didn't, I didn't realize that, and Craig knows about it, but in the New River Valley Magazine for, I guess this is July and August, on page 20, we have doggy doors, kitty cattios, and so much more. So there is a nice article about our new facility, our animal care and adoption center. And I'll just remind folks that it is open Monday through Friday from 11 to 6:00, and Saturday through Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. And our adoptions are going well. And in fact, I've had some people from my district over there adopting some little kittens. So please come and visit, even if you don't want to adopt. We need volunteers, and also, it's just fun to be with the animals. And so, please stop by if you haven't had a chance yet. The other thing is, I, I attended, I just, I drove in from Columbus, Ohio to this meeting from the NACO Convention. That's the National Association of Counties. I'd never been to a NACO Convention, even though I've been on the board all this time, but I represented Virginia as president of the Virginia Association of Counties. And I want to tell you that it was really impressive. You start to think about our annual conference and multiply that by about 100 percent. There's so much going on that, there'd be so many things going on that you would want to attend that, you know, it was hard to pick one to go to. But our new president is the Honorable Roy Charles Brooks. He is from Texas, and his focus during his presidential year will be on poverty. And he's really focused on looking across the country, because all, we have so many counties, you know, there's over 3,000 counties, there's 3,069 counties across the United States, and that just perishes too. But anyway, he wants to focus in on poverty because obviously, as federal and state funds continue to grow less and less, that doesn't mean that poverty is going to go away. It doesn't mean that we're not going to have folks that we all need to care for, and it always falls at the local level. So I'm going to be real interested to see how, what programs come up. What really, I found exciting about this is that you can get so many ideas about what other folks are doing across the country. And there's a big movement right now, and I think, you know, we sort of have a little bit of start in our, in our county with our drug port, but there's a big movement right now to really look at folks that are going to jail. Do they really need to be there? And that specifically relates to people that are having mental health issues and substance abuse issues because, is that the place that takes care of those issues? And so I went to three different workshops on that and learned a lot. So I guess I would encourage us to, to, you know, really take, take advantage of our NACO membership. If you go on the NACO website, there's all kinds of information and clicks to grants and just free information that we can access from what other folks are doing across the country. So I really, I really did enjoy it. It was well worth the drive to Columbus and back. And I think that's, oh, wow, Judy. That was sort of a good ending with the music like that. But I think, oh, I knew what I was going to tell you. We have a supervisor that you might have met from King George County. Her name is Ruby Bravo, and she was elected, this is, it was a really, she had a campaign for this. She is our new South Region Representative, and so Virginia now has a place on the NACO Board that we didn't have before. So this is really impressive, and she worked really hard to get it. So we also had several members from across the state that were appointed by the new president as vice chairs of steering committees. And so that also was impressive for Virginia. So that is my NACO report.
Oh, yes, we were number four. Want to talk about the award?
Yes, they're, they announced at NACO, so we can announce, we can, yeah, we can announce this publicly. The county, for the last couple of years, has been recognized as a leader in digital governance and received awards from NACO. We, it was announced at the NACO Conference that we were the number four county in the country for communities under 150,000 for digital governments in the United States.
Yeah, it's a really big honor, and we were talked about by the different, the different counties and congratulated. It's a really big honor. So we really need to thank our staff and the people that, and the people.
We'll pass that along and we'll, we'll get that out.
Supervisor Demots?
My report is very, very quick tonight. I'm just going to help people along with their early August to mid-August weekend planning. First, the first weekend in August, August 4th and 5th, is stepping out, or stepping out, I apologize, in downtown Blacksburg. So that is Friday and Saturday. I don't imagine there's many people in the New River Valley that aren't aware of it, but in case there's any newcomers in the audience or watching us on television, huge festival in downtown Blacksburg and a lot of fun. And then the following weekend is a wonderful opportunity. They only come, come around a few times a year, and that's the Mount Tabor Ruin Town Club's Fish Fry. That's August the 12th from 5:00 to 7:00. It's Lester's Chapel on Mount Tabor Road. And headlining that event will be the Panjammers, which is a steel drum band from, that practices in Blacksburg. Absolutely wonderful, good fun to listen to, and a great way to have a good dinner. And then also, all funds raised from the Fish Fry go back into community organizations that are doing good work in the community.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any report tonight.
Supervisor Creve?
No.
Supervisor Perkins?
No report.
Supervisor King?
No report.
Well, I've got a couple of things. One, I'd like to report from the Fire and Rescue Commission. They're working through their whole process and the budget process. One of the larger purchases is a new pumper truck for Blacksburg that'll be going that way. But it is wonderful to see these folks work out, okay, who needs it worst? Who needs to get this truck replaced? And it's an honor to be a part of that commission. Also, I want you to know that Neil Turner has been meeting with Chief Wilson about the ACE Program. And one of the ideas that was brought up is about fire prevention and neighborhoods. We have a lot of neighborhoods who are in woods. And one of the things that the auxiliaries may be doing is going out to residents, such as like Creston Forest, and making them fire safe. Where they move away, brush, and debris, and things like that, as part of their community service. And they may also be able to get some federal grants along those lines and utilize the community service aspects of the ACE Program. So that's continuing to move forward.[1729.92]